Everybody would turn off their cell phones, please, or put them on mute. We would appreciate that as courtesy to everybody. And with that, I will call to order the City of Cotwood Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting in council chambers Monday, April 16th, 2018 at 6:00 PM. Amber, may we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Hart.
Present.
Commissioner Dowell.
Present.
Commissioner Narwood.
Present.
Vice Chairman Wasden.
Here.
And Chairman Williams.
Here. Before we go on to the next item, I'd like to introduce our newest Commissioner, Chris Dowell, and welcome him aboard, and really pleased for his service. And we'd like to give you a minute to introduce yourself to other commissioners, just real brief resume of who you are and what you're doing. What you been doing?
My name is Chris Dowell. I've been an Arizona resident my entire life, served in the military for about 14 years, been in law enforcement for over 20. My family's originally from here, my wife's family's from here. We moved back about seven months ago, so I've been back about seven months. I work for the city, and I'm happy to be here.
Okay. Chris, we really do appreciate your service and looking forward to your perspective on these various issues. Next item is approval of the minutes. Do I see here any corrections, additions, subtractions from anybody? If not, I'll ask the Vice Chairman to issue a motion, please.
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the minutes from the meeting of February 26, 2018.
Second motion.
Second. Vice Chairman Wasden, Commissioner Narwood seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried unanimously. Okay. At this time was for the call to the public. This is a time for the public to comment on any matter that does not appear on our agenda. Commission members may not discuss items not identified on the agenda pursuant to law. Action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, responding to criticism, or scheduling the matter or consideration at a later date. Comments are limited to five minutes for each person, and I have Mr. Robert Gooddale who would like to speak to us on the call to public. Five minutes, sir.
Thank you. My name is Robert Gooddale. I live in the Verde-Santa Fe community over on Cornville Road, and we've been experiencing a significant amount of wash erosion. As a result, we feel of some inadequately prepared wash areas within our subdivision, but our concern, and the reason I am here this evening, is to raise that level of concern with the new project going in across the street being 89 and Vine. We just want to be on record that we have a concern with the additional watershed that will be generated, and the concentration points, and how they will affect downstream communities such as ourself. So I emailed, I apologize, I didn't have your email, to send a report that we put together and was actually, we had a meeting with the Yavapai County Flood Control District in December 14th, 2017, and we met with Supervisors Garrison and Thurman. And unfortunately, we came away with not too very encouraging news. They basically stated we were on our own. So saying that, we just want to make sure going forward that the project across the street is having due diligence done, they get the proper studies recorded and looked at, and the inspections done, and go from there.
If you have something you can leave with the staff, we cannot take it personally.
Very good. Let me, I have emailed this report to four of you.
The staff will make sure we get the rest of them.
Okay.
Fine, thank you, sir.
I'll email to them.
Any other comments? Okay, thank you. Old business, there's none, so we'll go on to new business. Our first new business is DR 18002, Oxendale Renovation, request for design review at 3310, addition renovation to the Oxendale dealership on 89A.
Thank you, Chairman Williams. As you said, this is a design review application for an expansion and renovation to the existing Oxendale Automotive facility on 89A. What they'll be doing is constructing just under a 5,000 square foot, two-story addition that will be used for their own records and parts department. That's the addition to the building. There's a little bit of a facade extension that they'll be doing currently. There is a little canopy in front, and they'll be extending that out six feet, be using the same materials as presently exist, so that six feet may not even be noticeable as you're driving by, but it does help their operation. Because this is the scope of their project, it did require a design review, and I do have some pictures I want to show you, so you can see the subject site, where it is on 89A. It will be a two-story building. That's going to be behind the existing single level that you see, so you will see some of that second-story addition, which you'll see in a minute on some of the pictures. The interior renovations is just to make the flow of their service a little bit smoother, and then there will be some minor repaving and resurfacing of the parking lot when the project is complete, but it won't result in any net loss of parking landscaping of those items. So if you can see, the existing building is right in here. The two-story addition is sort of this triangular-shaped portion back here, a little bit of the canopy in the back, and the extension of the front canopy area is right in this area. This is presently what it looks like now. The new canopy will extend this front wall here out six feet. So if you can sort of see, right here is their existing line, and the new front canopy dimension would be right in that location. And then they'll be doing interior renovations as well. This is what you see from Highway 89A, so the existing portion of the building is already there. This, bringing it out six feet, you know, closer to the street, is not really going to change the appearance of that portion of the building, but the upper two-story building constructed to the rear of the property will be visible from the street. The north elevation, this is actually what you would see from behind the property. This is only, there's a wash back there and sand and gravel operation. East elevation, this is a side view of that canopy extension right now, probably ends approximately right in that location and will be coming out. And that will give additional space in here for vehicular movement. And this is just what would be seen from their own property, the opposite side of the building, and there's the canopy. And this is the portion of the two-story building here that you will see from their property. The floor plan of that triangular-shaped addition, the lower level is their parts, service inventory. The upper would be for records. This is currently what it looks like. The odd-shaped portion of the building will sort of extend along, the foundation would be along in that area, approximately right there. So these vehicles that are parked there are where the new building will be. Presently, that's what it looks like from across the highway, so the two-story addition portion would be seen back up in there. It's a little different perspective. So you can see here where that six-foot addition will bring this entire wall out. This is looking to the west from in front of the property, and then looking to the east from in front of the property. And with that, that's all I have. If you have any questions.
Okay. Mr. Hart, any questions? Questions? Mr. Dowell?
No, sir.
Mr. Narwood?
I just have one question, Jim. On the new building, will that roof line be higher or about equal to the existing highest portion of the existing building?
Because that peak, it's going to be much higher than that?
Yes. Yeah, well. This portion will, you don't see now anything beyond the roof line.
Yeah.
That's the new portion.
Is that like approximately eight or 10 feet or so?
Architect is here.
I didn't quite catch that.
Yeah, the architect is here. Maybe that would be a good question for the architect.
All right.
Exact height.
We can ask the applicant there, Tom. We'll get that clarified, that's a good point. Mr.?
I don't have any questions, no, for Jim. No questions for Jim.
I have no questions either. Thank you, Jim. Your applicant's here, we'd like to hear from them, please.
Bob Woods, the architect, is here, so why don't you come on up and introduce yourselves?
You give us your name, sir, please.
Bobby Woods, architect at 1473 South Graybar Drive, Cotwood.
Cotwood.
So, first of all, good job, Jim, that covered it pretty well. The height of the, overall height of the building is 24 foot eight. So it's approximately a two-story building.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to discuss about it?
A little clarification. The reason we pulled out the port-a-cachet or covered area is they want to get two service lanes for the customers under shade. And if you kind of know how the parks, parks and service operates, your customer drives into the shade, they get out of their car, and then Oxendale services it from there. So they really didn't have that opportunity with the setup they had. So that's, that was the point of pulling that out, getting two complete lanes. That, like there, that width allows for two lanes and a little bit of pedestrian.
Good.
Other than that, that was a very clear description of the project, it's very straightforward.
Okay. Mr. Hart, any questions, sir?
No.
Okay. Yes, sir. Tom, any question to the applicant? Are you okay, Vice Chairman?
Yeah, I had some questions, just if you go to the south elevation, Jim, could you go back there? Is there, was there any consideration, because that is such an addition to the top of that? It's really, and you do have visibility coming up 89A, the south, or, excuse me, the east and west. Was there any consideration to do something crowning around that, not on the north side, but to break that up, especially, you know, I don't know if that's a service door up there, but I'm trying to, from the design perspective.
I got you. Alls we did really from a design perspective is understand from the front of the street, we got the building in front of it that'll cut down the elevation. Then we held back the two-story portion a little bit on both ends, so, you know, we didn't make that front and center in front of the one story. So there was a little bit of consideration, but the reality is, we're trying to get, we're trying to get as much space as we could back there, and we felt by putting it in the back of the building, it's not going to have much of an effect on 89A.
Well, no, I'm talking just in terms of cosmetics, how it looks. On that top, on the addition up there, crowning that or putting out something, you're stuckling it, so, you know.
Like another band?
A six or eight-inch band.
Like we have the same on the, over some of the other areas, like your canopy.
Right. It draws a different color, because it, and especially with that door, I think you're, what you're doing is great, but you're going to kind of have a little bit, you're going to take away from what you're doing, and it's, it's not a lot, it's just some cosmetic fixes I think will really enhance the building. And the other suggestion I had is similar with your pulling out that front six feet, and on the, those pillars, you've got the two pillars to the entrance that are rock-faced, just the thought of doing those other two pillars in front just to dress that up as well. I don't know if you can go back to that same south view, Jim, and look at that, but...
I understand. Yeah, they have, right now, they have just a wings corner at the bottom of the column.
Right, at the very bottom, and I know you've got, they're double set, so there's another column that's on the building, but on the front ones, the facing going up those two additional columns that are out front, and crowning that top new addition so that it further broke that up. I think you're going to get like a much better visual and look from that. You're, it's such a...
Well, I, we hadn't discussed that, but I think we'd be open to add in a detail, maybe, to crown the top of that, is what you're saying?
Yeah, like a pop-out, you know, like a...
I know what you're saying, you can just pop it out, whatever.
Give it some dimension and a different coat of paint or something like that that ties in, but that accentuates and showcases the building. I think it's little details, I think, that would really...
So how will we approach something like that? Maybe come back to you with...
I don't think you'd have to come back. We can recommend it in our motion here, and you guys can...
I think we're receptive to that, so I'm taking a look at it anyways.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yes.
I think we're going to want to keep the side pillars of the stone just coming up.
Sir, would you come up to the microphone, please, and introduce yourself? Your name, please. We're recording this, so it's on television.
I am Matthew Oxendale.
Okay.
I was just going to comment on the, the side pillars where the stone only comes up a few feet. I think we want to leave that at that height. If memory serves me correct, that's the way we've done the primary building coming across to the main building of the dealership, so I'd want to try to keep the build consistent across the buildings. That's all, just wanted to comment.
Do you have any problem about decorating along the top? I don't know, putting something...
I don't think so. I would, I'd want to speak with Bobby a little bit more on that, but I think I can understand what he's, what he's talking about there.
Yeah, because it's a good building. It's a good-looking building with the stonework and the tile, and this would just sort of follow that same kind of theme, just to give a little break and, you know, add to it, because it's been a, you know, been a good-looking building, so.
Yeah.
All right.
Do you, one other question, the old parts and service, I know you've got that facade still up there, is that going to be used as a future sign or designation?
We just now got some information on our signage, and that's going away, if I'm not mistaken, but we didn't, at this late date, we didn't want to submit all our signage. Essentially...
If you look at that picture right now.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
So, the signage pretty much remains the same, it's just new. So, on the far left, it's going to say Oxendale.
Can I go ahead?
Yeah, you can pass it around here. And then the, going from left to right.
Can you use that?
Yeah.
The middle is, yeah.
Oxendale. Oxendale. Then we'll go parts and service here. Everybody just look at the eight and a half by 11. So this one will be parts and service, and then the one that bumps up right now becomes accessories.
All right.
So we're essentially using the same format, changing up the, what it says on.
All right. Do we need to see that, or I think the staff can handle that? They're not really changing the signage?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Staff was going to ask you, the commission, for a special meeting for May 7th, right? So we have several items, cannot wait till the next month, so we were thinking to have another meeting in between, which will be May 7th special meeting, so that's what we were going to ask you.
Okay, so...
So that gives the applicant another chance to come back.
We can make a stipulation then tonight, that you'll come with it, signage will be approved at a future meeting.
So you would include everything in one packet, and you won't wait another month? We will give it to the commission.
Yeah, yes, Mr. Hart.
I notice here on these, on the drawings, that it looks like you're making an effort to, like for the accessory sign, bring the lettering into conformance to the lettering that you're using on the rest of the building, rather than the garish red lettering.
Right.
Is that, am I seeing this correctly?
We've just begun the effort of trying to make the signage work out a little better, so this was the first rendition. We hadn't really intended to share it with you tonight, but that's the point, that they're working, now working with the designer.
Well, I mean, that was my question, is that the direction that you're going? Because I think that would be a very good direction to go.
Right.
Because the, the red there on the right just, you know, clashes with the building and everything else.
Okay, well, we'll take that up May 7th, so it gives us an idea, some input, okay. And so, any other questions, Commissioner, on the building itself, its design? Could there be questions to the applicant?
No for the question.
Any questions?
No.
Questions, sir?
No.
I'm fine, thank you, Mr. Woods, we appreciate it, and we'll possibly see you May 7th.
Okay, so let me understand this. On May 7th, that's the point, actually, where a decision will be made.
Correct.
So would I make a decision tonight with additional requests? We're coming in for one shot deal on May 7th. Is that what I'm understanding?
7th would be for the signs.
Sign only.
We'll make a decision right now for...
Thank you. That's what I was hoping.
Yeah, we'll make a decision. Yeah, yeah.
I thought everything is coming on the 7th, so it's up to you how you want to go.
No, I think we'll go ahead with the design, what we've got tonight.
It helps move forward with the project.
Now, question, sir. The two stipulations we will, we've got several stipulations, which we'll go over with you, but two additional ones, one will be about signage approval at a future meeting. Second will be to validate our Vice Chairman up to word that on the, on the decoration of the second story.
Fantastic.
To come back, that would be a stipulation to be, and we could work that out with the staff, but...
And maybe we could do that on the 7th also?
Yeah.
Is that the idea? On that, coming backward, or working out with the staff?
You could probably...
Yeah, we were, we're going to add that as a recommendation tonight.
Yeah, yeah, we'll go over those if you have any question before we vote. We'll, we'll ask you a question, whether those are all fine, Mr. Oxendale, too, and then we'll go forward, okay?
All right, perfect, thank you.
All right. Anybody from the public wish to speak to this matter? I don't have any slips, so I'll close the meeting to the public. Commissioner Hart, your comments, sir?
Well, I agree with our other chairman there, or other member, about trying to get some relief on that, the two-story section in the back. Just something to give some kind of visual relief rather than a stark background, and I think that would be a worthwhile endeavor. And also, when you approach the signage, bringing the signage so that there's consistency in the lettering, because right now it looks kind of odd, boggey.
Mr. Dowell, any comments?
I would just agree also that the top needs to be, have some kind of breakup. Other than that, I have no questions.
Mr. Narwood?
Nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman, any other further comments?
No, I just think it's great that expansion is, assuming it's great for business, so I'm glad to see that that's happening, and welcome the addition.
Yes, I would second that very much, and continuation of a good project, and always like to see the businesses growing in our town, and so with that, Vice Chairman, I would entertain a motion, please, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for DR 18-003, Oxendale Renovation, approval by the commission with the following stipulations, that the project is developed in conformance with the development plan submitted for the April 16, 2018 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and two, that the project conforms to the Code Review Board comments dated February 5th, 2018, three, assertive certificate of zoning compliance documentation, documenting, let me put these on, documenting the completion of condition shall be issued prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, and four, recommendation for crowning the new addition of the building on the east, south, and west side with type of molding or pop-out relief.
Okay, how about number five, about signage?
And number five, signage will be addressed in the May 7th, 2018 special planning and zoning meeting.
Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. I have a motion from Vice Chairman, and a second from Commissioner Hart. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimously approved, thank you. Okay, our next item is PCU 18002 and DR 18001. This is for conditional use permit and design review to allow placing a new drive-in, drive-through and walk-up coffee shop on in the Frye City Shopping Center site.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commission, good evening. We have tonight, PCU 18002 and DR 18001 for a Dutch Brothers coffee shop located on the north end of the Food City Shopping Center. If you remember, there used to be a smaller coffee... a smaller coffee shop there. It was recently removed, but it had been there for a couple years previously. It had been placed there and also removed. What these guys are looking to do is cut out a portion of the current property from about here over enough like that. It's going to be about point six-four acres. They're going to build a roughly eight-hundred sixty-square-foot building. There's not going to be any interior access to the public. It's going to be drive-through and walk-up only with a patio for people who want to stay there and enjoy their refreshments. The portion they're going to cut out is approximately point six-four acres. The total shopping center is about seven point nine-two acres. It's going to be a one-story building. They're going to provide twenty-nine parking spaces for that parcel, that new parcel, who are only required to have twenty-four. The lot split's going to, going to, and the development's going to cause a hundred and five parking spaces to be removed from the existing shopping center, and they currently have four hundred and fifty-six before that takes place. With that removal, they'll have three hundred and fifty-one. Under the current parking ordinance, the shopping center would be required to have four hundred and eleven. The shopping center was built prior to the city zoning ordinance going into effect, so they accommodated the parking even without it being part of the ordinance at that time. There's the layout of their property. Again, it's a little square portion on the very north end of budding eighty-nine A. They're going to maintain access on the two driveways on the east and west of it, have their own circulation through this part here. The staff requested, and they accommodated, that they remove these parking aisles here on the south side of property to maintain accessways, so people have a way around the development. They don't just cut through parking spots. They have that drive aisle there. The drive-through is going to have double stacking, provide for numerous vehicles to be stacked in there. It's going to be a low screen wall along this section here to help block headlights from eighty-nine A, from the vehicles in the driveway and vehicles on the highway, so nobody's blinding each other. Their landscape plan meets all code requirements. There's two large pine trees here that are going to remain. We're not going to remove those. We're going to clean this up, add some additional landscaping along eighty-nine A and around their developed property here. Trash enclosure is kind of in the center right here, breaks up the parking here, here, allows for plenty of circulation. Also, we landscaped around that. Some of the elevations of what the proposed building will look like. It's pretty standard. Those are some conceptual views of it. And that's a proposed street view, looking at it from that eastern driveway on eighty-nine A. Here's that wall I was just talking about there. Some pictures, as it sits today. These pictures were taken late on a Friday afternoon when you'd think it'd be fairly busy in there. The parking lot is not usually very full, at least from what we've seen. Again, that's Friday afternoon showing the parking there. Now, keep in mind that the parking only includes what is available for the shopping center, including around this side over here, all along here and up by these buildings that are off over here. It does not include anything with the bank. The bank's its own separate property with its own parking. It's a view of the driveway, looking at eighty-nine A. There's the bank in the same, not on the same property, but in the same complex. That's across the street, used car lot. That's looking towards the east down eighty-nine A and up towards the west, and then back towards the main grocery store within that shopping center. That's one of the driveways there. Engineering is going to require them to improve this section here, make it compliant. There's no requirements to do anything else with the driveways, right in, right out, anything like that, that would come from A dot anyways, and they're not in a position to make them do that for this development. It requires conditional use permit because it is zone C one right now, late commercial, and this is a drive-through facility requires either C two or a conditional use permit in the C one zone. There's a representative of the project here to answer any questions we may have. Turn it back over to you.
Okay. Commissioner Hart, do you have any questions of Scott?
Yes. When I look at this plan, the question that I have is how are they going to deal with people who have just made a purchase and are getting ready to accelerate away from the window? And that's where the sidewalk is, going right across in front.
Right here?
Yeah.
Yeah, they just put that sidewalk in to accommodate any pedestrian traffic coming off of the sidewalk here so they can access, and they don't have to walk down through the driveway.
Is it that they're not anticipating very much pedestrian traffic?
That's a question I'll let the applicant answer. They'd be more inclined to know those details.
And the other one that I have is concerning the control of the people who are merging in the two lanes into one. Are they going to have a system in place, or is it going to be the honor system?
I don't think there's any real system in place from what I've seen at other locations that do that, and it's just kind of a leapfrog effect where this person's here, this person's here.
Yeah, it's just, it's...
McDonald's is a good example.
Yeah, it's how you queue up there that, you know...
It allows for more stacking. It doesn't block drive aisles.
Well, I mean, I've, but I mean, I've also seen places that had that system, and it was a disaster.
And unfortunately, it's up to the individual driver, and you hope that they'll be accommodating, and, but I don't think anybody can really control that.
And one other more, you know, does, do they know that the floor plan and the site plan don't agree?
Yeah. I'll have to check this. I didn't put that floor plan on the, in which, which sheet are you looking at?
Well, look at any of the site plans and look where the north end points.
If you look at A two...
And then look at A one point one, and then go to A two point zero.
And then, I think it's A two point zero that's out of sync, and if you look and follow that through on their site plans, if you go over to A three dot O, it's the same thing, technically, where they say south side elevation or rear elevation, that's actually the east side. So, it's, that is kind of, and then the south, the east side that they have is actually the south side, so all of those are...
Mislabeled, yeah.
Yeah. So, they're, those are not correct, too.
Yeah, we can have them correct that for a second.
Any other questions?
Let's see. Let's check.
No, that's it.
That's it. Commissioner Dell, any questions?
No, sir.
Mr. Norwood?
Yes, would you show us where, where the outside patio area is going to be? I'm not...
Yeah, it's going to be right here on the south part of the building, right here in this area.
Okay, so, so maybe this is a better question for the applicant, but, you know, I see tremendous number of parking places, but I see a very small patio, and I was just wondering how, what's the relationship between the seating at the patio, which will be the only place walk-up customers or even driving customers could sit, versus how many parking places you have?
Parking is based on usable square footage.
Of the building?
Of whatever building and patio areas. So, the building itself, and then, because they're only going to have limited usable area within there, and then the size of patio contributes to the required, their required parking amount.
So, the building size and the patio determines the amount of parking?
Usable square footage of it, yes.
But the only usable square footage for a patron is on the patio, right?
Yes, on this particular one.
So, I guess my question is, is the number of parking places in excess of what would probably be needed for the number of seedings that we would have? Or am I asking a question that's ridiculous?
Well, we don't do it based on seating. We do it based on square footage. So...
Some places do it that way, but we are...
Other, yeah. Other uses, we do have it as seating, but restaurants, drive-throughs, things like that, we do it with square footage.
Okay. I have another question, but I think it relates, it might be best directed toward the applicant.
Okay.
We may have to circle back on it, but...
Vice Chairman.
Did, Scott, did you get any sample of what that wall, that exterior, that shielding wall is made of? There's a depiction of it in one of the renderings, but there's no material...
Yeah, it should be a CMU wall.
And my other question is, shouldn't that, is that rounds here on that, on this east side? I notice if you go back to where you started at, the, one more, I see that that stops, you know, three-quarters of the way up, and technically, those cars are queued up facing the eastbound traffic, and I think there's still an issue with a shielding, that that wall should actually wrap around, just like it, from this angle right here, it almost seems like it's, it's done in reverse, because the headlights are facing that way into oncoming traffic, and that wall should actually be on that west side and shielding from that traffic that's coming eastbound. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do.
So, I didn't know, one, the materials, I would like to see that, and I'd like to see that wrap around, because I think the problem is more shining into that oncoming traffic.
Yeah, so the materials, just your standard CMU block on the wall, and that could be part of stipulation, stipulation to extend that.
Yeah, I didn't know if you had any update on that, or...
We can ask the applicant, maybe, to see what they have to say. Okay, I don't have any questions, Scott. Okay, the applicant is here? Representative? Please give us your name, please.
Yeah, Andrew Beach, representing Simon CRE, the developer on this project. And to answer one of the initial questions with some of the elevations, we can have those revised with the right directions on there. That was just a mistake. So, I agree with, the material will be a CMU block, and then I kind of agree that we can wrap it around on the west side there. That makes a little bit more sense, so we can revise that as well.
I, I'm just going, while you're talking about revisions, it seems, in addition to what we just talked about, what Commissioner Hart brought up, the depictions themselves, which I understand are merely an idea of the concept, basically, but you're, you're basically giving us a depiction of what I would say is a two, a two-drive-up-window building.
Mm-hmm.
But in our case, you're taking that second drive-up and making it the patio. Is that right? Because the reference, and I'm looking on page A three, and what you say is the north side elevation at the very bottom left-hand corner, which is actually the west side. So, if you're looking at that, I don't know if you have that on a slide, Scott, that might be easier for people to look at.
Eighty-three, you said?
Yeah. Yeah, there we go. So, bottom left-hand corner.
Yeah.
Assuming that I've read that right, what shows on your plans is basically, that's a drive-through lane on the right side and also the left side. On the right side, it's that, that little bar up there is, is referenced in your notes as a clearance indicator for pull-through on there. So, are you saying that that is basically the patio?
So, I guess I'm getting a little confused here. So, I think where the confusion is, what I believe is the east side should be on the front elevation, the north side. I think that was flipped. And then, as for the patio, are you, you're talking about on this, okay?
Yeah, maybe if I...
Right here? Is this, is this what you're referring to? Yeah, exactly. So, probably, that would be, that would be the patio. You're correct on that. That's what we have.
Okay, so, I didn't see any indication where, other than your notes in here indicate it's a, a drive-through lane, and that's a clearance marker for traffic on your notes, so I'm assuming that was just something that wasn't updated on your end. I wanted to clarify.
I think that was the case. So, you know, I can revisit with our architect, who's supposed to be here today, but had an emergency, so I can, you know, clear that up.
Yeah. It just doesn't match up with the, what, what's presented, similar to what Commissioner Hart mentioned about the elevation references to north, south, east, and west.
Yeah. We can, we can have those updated and then sent back review as well.
Any other comments, sir, on your project, or? Any other comments you'd like to make?
Oh, sorry, I thought that was... Uh, no, I don't, I don't think so.
The concept and whatever.
Have any other questions that I can answer?
Yeah. Okay, well, let's start with Commissioner Hart.
The upper-left elevation, that actually is off one of the most-used entries into that parking lot. And is there any way we can get some better relief on that elevation? I mean, you just come up, and the introduction to your project is actually a blank wall for most people. That's the first thing they're going to see, unless they're coming in from the store side.
Yes, well...
I think you need to take a look at that. See, like I said, get, get some, some three-dimensional relief, material relief, something going on, because that's not a very good introduction to your building from the place that it's going to be seen a lot.
Yeah, he's, that south side rendering would technically be the east side, and that would face the bank directly.
Yeah, as it would.
So, I think that's a valid concern, is that you're getting a blank slate right there.
Yeah. Now, as relief, what, you know, is there anything in particular that you'd be looking for?
Well, I know you're probably going to run into some signing, possibly some signings just, but I'm thinking that that might be a better place for one of your signs, if you want to introduce your building to people on the street.
I, I guess I would just recommend it says the same thing that the other three sides say, the same type of, same type of signage.
Yeah.
Chairman?
Yes.
We are supposed to design the project for the applicant. We can give general suggestions.
Yes.
But I think they are already, yeah. They are, we are just going to leave it in architectural elements. It's up to them what they do, because if we say signage, they already meet the limit of the signage, so I think it's better just to leave it up to them.
Well, we can do it as a recommendation, yeah, just as an idea. That's what we're... That's what we're trying, you know, that, that's for you, that's...
But something to jazz up that part, because that's gonna be your first introduction to your building. For a number of people coming in.
Commissioner Owen?
I have some ques, I have a question, it's a general question, but I'd like you to give me some specific answers on this question.
Okay.
And it is as follows, um, have you considered alternate circulation patterns? Ingress and ingress and egress to the site?
Uh, yes.
There's, I'm sorry.
Didn't mean to cut you off.
Yeah, I, I can foresee some, some issues, particularly during peak hours. Now, the first question I have relative to, to circulation is, what would be the peak hours for this business?
Well, Dutch Bros from kind of the traffic studies that we've done on other sites, you generally from eight to, probably seven-thirty to nine-thirties going to be the peak hours in the morning. As people are going to work and commuting to work. So those are the kind of, the rush that they do see.
How about PM in the afternoon?
PM, I wouldn't classify as a rush hour, I mean, as people are coming home from work, you'll definitely see an increase in traffic, I wouldn't call it a peak hour, though, relative to the overall, uh, operations of the store.
Okay. Have you considered, um, instead of entering the site from the east and the west, but enter the site only from the south and exit only to the south?
I'm not sure with the queuing and the stacking of the drive-through, uh, how that would, would work out.
I'll answer that if I, Chairman?
Yes.
If I may answer that, yes, we did go through several designs, this is not the original design they came up with. So, uh, we had several meetings and this came up as a best solution. Remember, yeah, whatever they do, they are taking parking spaces from the grocery, uh, shopping center. So this was the one minimized parking lots and also circulation. Original design came up as, um, and access points were closer to the street. But for the rush hours, we thought that will be creating problems, so they, they worked with us, they brought it, uh, to south. And also we had some concerns about the trash container and circulation of that, the way the trash, uh, truck coming and picking it up. Maybe after two, three options, this was the last position we thought everybody was agreeing on, this is gonna work the best. Yes, they did have several options and this was all with the staff recommendations and engineering department, public works, all of us, this was the final design.
It just looks to me as if there, there can be some issues, um, in ingress and egress, particularly, uh, with the entrance and, and the exit onto, from, from the west exit. Uh, having to cross that traffic, I thought it would be a better idea, or if it was a workable idea, to just extend through those two parking places and on the right entrance from the south, and you lose three, but you have an excess of five parking places anyway. So you could give up the five parking places, still be within ordinance, and enter and exit from the south side and not have to, um, have cars maybe stacked up to leave if you're that busy. I do understand that at eight o'clock in the morning, the supermarket isn't all that busy. But still, I was just wondering if that made more sense, but apparently it was considered in, in not the number one.
Vice Chairman?
No more questions.
Just another thought outside of kind of what I've commented before, um, uh... In my opinion, it, it seems like you're retrofitting an existing concept that you've put in a lot of different places. And I believe you're missing an opportunity, kind of what Commissioner Narwood mentioned before, out on the patio. When you look at your renderings here, they're outside of the inaccuracies we've already mentioned, even the, the concept with the wall is not accurate. You've got, um, and to the point from Commissioner Hart about that back end or the east side of the building, there is landscaping that will break that up, but in your depiction, that's not shown, it's cut off from that. So that's inaccurate too, so I, I would recommend that you, whoever put this together, go back through that because it's not an accurate depiction of what you're presenting. And I think your patio is, you will see the patio space here in town as a premium. You're, you're, I believe you're missing an opportunity to do something that is larger and more unique, that you would bring in more people, instead of using what's on your concept here as a drive-through lane, which, um, you're basically converting to a patio. Doing something that, um, you've got the parking that's gonna bring people in because they will linger. Go across the street to Starbucks in Safeway, which is not the most welcoming atmosphere, and people hang out there, and you, I think, are gonna be remiss for not doing something that is more welcoming and encompassing of that area out there. So, um, I would suggest the corrections here to the work and maybe thinking about that, um, for this site. And, um, the, the other thing that, um, maybe this comes up at the May 7th meeting, just in terms of the height, I would like to see the height of the, the wall to ensure that that does cover the headlight issue and that it does wrap around, so, um... Those are all the questions I have for you, slash comments.
I don't have any questions. Okay, uh, I don't have any, uh, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any input from the public? I don't have any sheets on it, so we'll close the floor to the public. Commissioner Hart, your final, uh, comment, sir, before we proceed?
I was wanting to elaborate on our vice chairman's, uh, comments about patio. If you're gonna have the patio, you need to provide some shade. I mean, when I look at that, all I see is paving. And there are going to be a lot of times of the year when it's rather warm around here. And, um, if you want people to congregate, you're going to need to give them some place with some protection from the sun. Whether it's additional landscaping or structures, but something, something to encourage those people to wanna stick around.
I have a comment, Mr. Chairman, one that's appropriate.
I think it's an exciting project, especially for, uh, that corner. And I think there's a lot of, uh, enthusiasm about this and a lot of people would embrace it. But at the same time, I'm with the other commissioners about it just being a cookie cutter, throw it down because that's what we do. Coming from Mayor Copa County, where I've seen quite a few of these Dutch Brothers, I know that the business there is gonna kick up immensely, and I know that this is gonna really, uh, kick up the level of use for that corner. But again, I think it needs to be planned, and I think it needs to be planned well. And right now, I'm not sure that it's completely planned as well as it should be for this. And with that corner, I think it needs to be, I think it needs to be, uh, good before we go. Not just to throw it on a piece of paper and be done with it.
I agree, Mr. Chairman, I, I would like to see all of the comments that were made here sincerely incorporated into, uh, a design package that would be, uh, a hundred percent accurate so that we could, you know, vote on something that incorporates some of the really good ideas that were brought forth here today. So I feel we should delay any approval of this and to get further input based on, from, from what the, the board has suggested.
Vice Chairman?
Yeah, I, I kind of feel the same way, that it seems like this was kind of a copy and paste job of a building that wasn't necessarily matching up with what was presented. And, um, particularly, I'd like to see the wall being addressed, I'd like to see dimensions with that. I'd like to see a sample, we require that of everybody else that comes in, and you've done that on the building, but the wall, this is gonna be right next to one of our main roads, and I think overall, it's a great concept. But I'd like to, to see that put in order the way it should have been originally. And, and, um, just in terms of the patio, that's kind of your decision. I think it's just a, uh, there, there is some shading provided with what I will say is just the drive-up window option there, but I, I think it, there's better options that will be better for the business and actually look better too. I think you'll have a, quite a large group of customers that will wanna come and, and sit and would appreciate a little bit more, um, space and maybe creativity and shade incorporated into that. And I would agree that maybe this is something we address on, come back with those changes for the 7th.
Sir, um, do you think some changes can be made and so forth to correct, make the corrections by May 7th? Or how, how soon will we have to get it in, uh, Baron, for our set May 7th meeting? To you, to staff?
Well, not next week, but after that will be the deadline.
What date?
Um, for the May 7th.
What would be the deadline date?
I, I don't have it right down in front of me, but we can say for May 7th, if applicant is ready, we'll go for it. If not, we can always table it whenever they are ready.
All right.
We can make that happen.
All right, very good.
Do you have, has the property been split out yet?
No.
No. So when do you think that's gonna happen?
Sir, come up to the microphone, I'm sorry, I apologize, yes. Hey, could you come to the microphone again, yeah?
Go ahead, I'll, I'll follow up after.
Yeah, so per a surveyor, no.
Um, that it's been submitted, I don't have an exact timeline of, of the approval process, but again, I can provide that.
Sure.
Just, I was wondering.
That, yeah, should be a problem, yes, Scott.
I can further answer that based on my correspondence with another individual associated with this. They're requesting, or stating to staff, that the parcel will not be split out until they get building permit approval. We've told them that we cannot do that, parcel needs to be split out before they apply for their building permits. We can't review plans on a parcel that does not exist. So if you notice, that's one of the stipulations that we put in there, and that's why.
Yeah, yeah, we'll be processed. All right, gentlemen, I, uh, concur with our comments. I think we need to, uh, delay this. Vice Chairman, I'd entertain a motion to table this through a future meeting?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that PCU 18-002 and DR 18-001 be tabled until, uh, the May 7th meeting or until a time, uh, appropriate for the, um, submitting group. We can see it May 7th if they don't have it, whenever they submit it to you.
Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Mr. Hart, second, Vice Chairman made the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and absolutely approved, uh, we'll table this till future meeting. Okay, thank you, all right. Next item on our agenda, Z zero eighteen zero zero two, amendment to section four oh six parking and loading requirements. To our, to our code, I guess, Scott?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, permission, um, Z O eighteen zero zero two, amendment to section four oh six parking and loading, adding four oh six H regarding bicycle parking. Staff has been working with the Bicycle Advisory Committee for a number of years. Also developed a bicycle plan that was approved by the City Council in 2009. The city has applied for and granted a couple of years ago, bronze status as a bicycle-friendly community. And the goal is to move forward and try to get silver status. One of the benefits to that is we'll be recognized as a more bicycle-friendly community. However, we have to put in provisions to allow that to happen, ranging from increased bike lanes, better markings on shared roadways, and developing, developing a bicycle parking ordinance. Looking at other cities, it's not an uncommon thing to have, so we decided to draw up an ordinance that requires bicycle parking on new developments and expansions of existing developments. Create certain guidelines, parameters that they have to meet, make it, uh, part of the design review process. Minimum number would be ten percent of the required amount of parking or two bicycle parking spaces, whichever is greater. It's a needed amendment addition to the ordinance as staff has researched and also as the Bicycle Advisory Committee has researched. Answer any questions you may have, any concerns?
As a former cyclist, I'm certainly in favor of doing anything that, uh, will increase the accessibility for bicycles in the community, in the community. And I think it's, you know, something that we need to be working on. I didn't see anything that stood out as, as being, uh, the only problem I ran was the decomposed granite. When that gets wet, um, it's... Your bicycle, your tires just really sink in it, and then when it sets, it's like rock. It's like loam. I would recommend avoiding it, if possible. I mean, yes, it's an acceptable surface, but as much as possible, use paving for the bicycle areas.
Mr. Dow.
Uh, I have quite a few questions. My first question is, did we get this ordinance from one that's existing already? Did we like take it from another city or another, uh, municipality that we liked? Or did we kind of cut and paste and like, this, this will fit us better here or here?
I think a little bit of that. One of our other planners, who has since retired, drafted most of what you see here.
Okay, 'cause my concerns are, I know there's an exception, you have an exception written in here, that talks about, you know, number seven says the planning is only commissioned, may allow exceptions, blah, blah, blah. I'm not a fan of having those kind of exceptions, um, because I believe it's more of a, uh... Whoever's sitting up here gets to choose what's gonna happen that day, and I'm not sure I'm a fan of that. Such, things like fifty feet primary building entrance, so these spaces have to be within fifty feet of a primary building entrance, right? Well, I think that's a problem down here in Old Town. I mean, we can grant the exception, right? I mean, I think it fits the exception, but I, if you walk down Old Town, we're gonna have a problem with a lot of this, so we'd have to grant exceptions to most of the businesses in this section of, of town unless we, uh, we tweaked it a little bit, maybe. I mean, it says fifty feet within primary building entrance, does it have to be primary building entrance or could it be a building entrance?
It doesn't have to be primary, um, but... It doesn't have to be primary, but a lot of these businesses are already in place, they'd have to do pretty substantial expansion for this requirement to kick in, I don't have a map to show you right now, but right down here on the corner of Panal and Main Street, they're looking at doing a bike rack right there on the side of the curb for public bike parking, so that'll help alleviate some of that.
I think the buildings that are already existing and the businesses that are already existing are probably good to go, but we're hopefully going to see quite a bit of growth down here in Old Town, we have some buildings that are coming up and we have some new growth opportunities, and I think with those, if you start pushing 50 feet from this front door, if this building goes up for sale, you start pushing 50 feet from this front door, where would we put that at here?
I see what you're saying, but also under number two, C, under exempt uses, we did put historic properties and districts in there, so that would pretty much cover every building down here in Old Town, to where you wouldn't, the commission wouldn't have to make that decision.
I'm for the, I'm pro bicycle, I just, I don't want to overdo the bicycle thing, and I think some of it, like the 10% of all spaces, I know we can exempt it, but I think you're going to, you're going to create a situation where there's going to be a lot of exceptions, and when you start creating a lot of exceptions to something, then it gets really muddy, and muddy is not what we need, so I guess my concerns are the 50 feet of the primary building entrance, I know it says business district, but when we talk about what businesses it has to have, auto repair, you know, maybe that could be put in there, do we need 10% of all spaces and auto repair place to have bicycle spaces, you know, or auto sales, or even the hotels, we cater the hotels here for tourism, we're not going to see a lot of bicyclists coming up to the tourism, so maybe we could put something like that into the ordinance to where we exempt those businesses right away so we're not having to grant them an exception because they don't need it, and again, we have places like Walmart, how many spaces are at Walmart, I'm guessing 1,000, so if we have 1,000 spaces at Walmart, by the rule, we'd have to have 100 bicycle spaces, so...
I do see what you're saying, staff has worked with the Bicycle Advisory Committee, doing, you know, the best route with that, there are representatives here that can guide you on their feelings on that, and why we kind of stuck with this the way we did.
Okay, good testimony, okay, you can leave.
No, I can wait for her.
That's fine, yes, Vice Scott.
I'd like to make a comment, I think that 10% is too high, he brings up the point of Walmart, now is he going to bring up the same issue, is if you have an organization that comes in that has 1,000 parking places, you're going to make them put 60 bicycle parking places, I think that's way, way over than what you need, I think 10% is too high, that's just an opinion, but I think it's too high for any business.
Question?
I think there should be a minimum.
It's something we could look at changing, but like I mentioned, we have looked at other cities, we're not just pulling this number out of the air and saying, let's just make it up, we have looked at other places that have.
When you looked at them though, did you look at the usage of those bicycle parking places, I mean, that's the important part, not to see whether they had them, but to see whether they're being utilized.
They don't go into details of specific uses as much.
But that would be, that would be the only way I could see that you could properly evaluate, not just pulling out a number from whether it's in Maricopa County or whether it's in Yavapai County, but whether or not they're being utilized, and I can certainly understand that you can't get that data, but I would rather err a little bit in the favor of less than more because I don't think having, you know, 60 bicycle parking places or 20 or 30 is going to encourage anybody to use their bike to go to the store if there's 10 spaces, I just don't see.
Vice Chairman.
Yeah, Scott, was there, with the committee, was there any discussion about including unicycles, it seems like there's a lot of talk about bicycles and unicyclists don't appear to be mentioned here at all.
No, I'm sorry, we were biased against unicycles.
It sounds like it.
And one other thing within the ordinance, I noticed that in number seven, it says, "With best practice pertaining to bicycle parking, particularly in regards to visibility, security, and convenience for bicyclists," so it starts to make the exception seem like we're favoring or pushing towards bicyclist rights more than maybe the businesses or the cities even, to the point where if somebody comes in here and says, well, I was a bicyclist, I think that this should, you know, visibility, security, and convenience for my bicycle is not, you're not seeing that, and I'm not sure I like the wording for the convenience for the bicyclist, maybe if it was the bicyclist and the businesses or the cities' best interest, but when you put the bicyclist in there solely, I think we're kind of, I don't know, you understand what I'm coming at?
A little bit, yeah.
I mean, we have walking public, too, right? So even if you said convenience for everybody, but when you just put the bicyclist in there, what about the walking public, if I got to put a bike rack here because this requires it, but now the public's got to walk around the bike rack, we're not, we're not thinking about their safety, or their considerations, so just a thought.
Okay, Scott, I don't have any real questions here, but Dr. Richards going to address from the committee?
I do want to back up real quick, though, to answer any of your guys' questions regarding that, that's part of under 7A, that exception, if you had a place like Walmart with 1,000 spaces, planning commission can reduce that number, not make them do the full 10%.
I know, I agree with the exception rule, I do think, right, right, but I think, still think, it doesn't change my opinion, I still think 10% is too high, but I think it's absolutely imperative that you have the exceptions because we're going to be doing those anyway, whether we have them in or not, we're going to have to do them, it's just the way it is, that's why we're here, if everything was cut and dried, then we wouldn't need the board, right, and just throw the rules at them and that's it.
Thank you, Scott. Your name, please.
Yes, Nancy Gottschalk, I work for Yavapai County Community Health Services, and it is through that work that I represent the Bicycle Advisory Committee, but I'm also a resident here in Old Town and a bicycle commuter, so there's a few things I'd love to address if I can, first is the development of the ordinance began, well, I don't, it began before my time with the VAC, but it's gone back and forth between the VAC and staff for truly years, there has been influence from standard ordinances, from Charlie Scully, who had worked on it for years, from the general plan, from Flagstaff Ordinance, Tucson Ordinance, so it has very much been considered for our specific area, one thing I also want to point out is, like, the one bar loop, like we see in Old Town, a couple of places, that is a, one loop is a parking spot for two bicycles, so when we're thinking about the space that is required, like I said, if you had to put in the minimum for two bicycles, that is just one loop, so that might address that concern there, and the 10%, it is certainly not beyond what other communities have done, again, if the city of Cottonwood is looking to develop and increase bicycling, the city has just passed and approved bike lanes on Main Street, we need to be looking forward that people are anticipating that they aren't just commuting, or they're not just bicycling for recreation, that they are commuting, and it's hard to anticipate where they might be going, perhaps their car broke down and they need to get to that car service station, so yes, the car service station would also need bicycle parking, I mean, people could ride their bikes to the same places that cars go, so that's why we're really trying to consider, maybe perhaps, there are plenty of folks who don't own cars, so I want to make sure that they have the opportunity to park their bike safely in a visible area where they're not asked to park, you know, behind a dumpster or something, that's kind of where the 50 feet come in, I think those were some of the concerns I heard.
Yes, okay, Mr. Hart, any questions?
Well, I actually have some sympathy for the, some of the, I mean, one of the classic questions, because I've dealt with this before, was if you're going to your local big box to pick up sheet of plywood, you're not going to find that convenient on a bicycle, so there are some places that are less likely to need a large number, but on the other hand, people who work there could just as easily ride a bicycle to work, so some kind of support for cyclists needs to be done, I think judgment needs to be brought in when in terms of, you know, the other 10%, yeah, I mean, there are some places where 10% is not reasonable, so I think the idea that we're going to, we're going to have to make some judgments occasionally as to, you know, what's reasonable and what's not.
Any questions, and no comments at this point, questions?
No comments.
Questions, questions, just questions?
No comments.
Any questions?
Nancy, thank you, okay, Dr. Richards. Dr. Robert Richards, I'm a resident of Cottonwood, I'm also on the Bicycle Advisory Committee, and I'm basically a recreational bicyclist, seen a retirement rider around town, that's probably me, I haven't seen the final product, to be quite honest with you, but it's gone through development, but one thing that I, I think that the city has been promoting housing for non-retirement people, working people within the community, and we are a service community, and most of those people that are in the service industry are low-income, my concern is that if you're, we have several projects going on of apartment buildings, and the presumption, I think, with builders and developers, you have an apartment building, you have to give enough space for people that are riding motorcycles or have cars, okay, I think, and I don't know if it's in the ordinance or not, but I think part of the consideration needs to be that apartment buildings need to have space for bicyclists, if you're indeed orienting towards low, middle-income people, they may not have a automobile, or if they do, maybe one part of the couple is using it, and they need to get to their workplace by using a bicycle, and many apartment buildings will have a, one space, maybe allotted to secure bicycle parking, I don't know if it's in there, to be quite honest with you, because I, as I said, I haven't seen the final product, but I think that bicycle parking for apartment buildings needs to be a consideration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir, any other comments to the public? Okay, if not, I'm going to close the floor, comments on this proposed note for amendment? Okay, yes, Mr. Dell.
I guess my comment is, I'm very much for the bicycle community, and I think we need to make space for it, I don't think, I guess my problem is, is applying it everywhere throughout the city the same way, that's my issue, is I don't think it should be applied the same way, I very much agree that apartments should have an abundance of parking for bicyclists, and that should be maybe something where you say like apartment buildings should have more than 10%, you know, rather than just 10%, so that's, I guess that's my issue, is maybe it shouldn't just be 10%, again, I believe in the exceptions, I think we should have the exceptions, but I think we could apply it a little bit better just by saying certain businesses shouldn't have, to have so many spaces, and certain businesses maybe should have more spaces, so all I'm saying is, instead of having a broad exception, let's narrow the exceptions down so that we're not having to address this every time, every week we have to address it because we have a new apartment complex coming up and somebody wants more, maybe we can put in there steps, you know, apartments need more, Walmart wouldn't need 10% because that would be maybe over the top, maybe something like that, just so that it cuts the exceptions down a little bit for that, and again, I guess my biggest issue is, we're a sales tax-based city, I don't want, or I don't feel we should, we should be putting a bigger burden on business, and I think some of this will put a bigger big burden on business, some of the businesses that we have, I guess it's my concern, is I don't want to push business out because they can't get enough space or they can't get within 50 feet of the door.
Just a minute, may I ask where you are, sir?
Heskey Allen with the Parks Recreation Department.
I'll give you a minute here, just a minute, Commissioner Hart, with your comments?
Now, or later? I don't agree with the 10%, but I do wholeheartedly agree with the exception clause number seven, I think that I personally have a lot of confidence in our professional people on the inside, and I would certainly take their recommendations relative to bicycle parking places, and I am positive that that would be negotiated properly with the applicants on behalf of the board and the community, so if there weren't exceptions, I don't think I could vote for this, but because there are exceptions, I find it to be not a problem, I think the 10% will be used properly, but...
Okay, Vice Chairman.
I, you know, in all the planning that we've done, you know, the 20, 30 planning we did, we have incorporated a lot of walking and biking paths, and this is, so this really isn't a new topic, I think it's just coming to us in a more organized manner, and I don't think it will necessarily be a burden, because this is, this applies to anything that's new coming into us, I don't necessarily think that the 10% is, should be a cut and dried, I agree, but these are things that will be presented to us as, as it stipulates in number two, that these are new items that are brought to us, or these are requirements that would be, if somebody is doing significant changes that are brought before us, so this wouldn't be something that would be blanket across the community, because I agree, otherwise you are taxing a business with putting something in that may or may not be used, but these are things that are coming new to us or that are being readdressed, and I liken it to the, what we've done with landscaping, we're trying to improve the landscape, especially of Main Street, our, really, our biggest tool is when a business comes in and says, this is what we want to do, that's when we can say, well, part of that is a stipulation to bring up and put in better landscaping and clean up the streetscape, and that's, would be as similar to what's going on here, as a new business came in or an existing business and says, I want to do this, then there would be a stipulation there, that's going to go through staff initially, and you're going to have to be the ones to determine that, and if it is excessive, then it can either be addressed at that level or with us, but part of the issue with apartment complexes is a lot of people don't park their bikes in bike racks, they take them up to their, where they live, because they don't want to leave them down there where they're three floors up and maybe a building away where they might get stolen, so even when we say, you know, like the 10% number, I don't know that that's really applicable, because that would be more of a temporary parking spot for most people, if they are commuting, they usually take care of their bikes and take them in, so I agree that maybe that 10% can sound a little bit across the board, but it also is, we're not going to be inundated with this because it's either new developments or it's going to be readdressing a development, and also, we're not the enforcement either, so this is something that, once it passes through here, this is on the books, this is... through here, this is on the books, this is code enforcement that's gonna have to resolve that, but I think we could handle that with any of the projects that come in force. We're not overwhelmed with these projects that come in that are gonna require, I'm trying to think of the last big project we had come in, and if it fell under this, if it were a Walmart, I think saying 100 parking spots, or bicycle spots is ridiculous. Yeah, the apartments.
The apartments.
And the ordinance gives you the provisions to reduce that number. And just to clarify on, on what you were saying, Vice Chairman Watson, this is only for expansions of projects that require design review. It's not just any expansion that just goes through staff-level review and approval. It's gotta be something that's subject to design review in front of the commission before this kicks in.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, it's, let's, for the last year, that's maybe one or two at the very most projects a month, and I would say it's closer to one of existing projects that come.
Hearing the commission's concerns, looking through the ordinance, I feel that what your concerns are, are addressed in here. Back to applicability, number, or number two C, you know, it, it includes the historic properties, historic districts, self-storage facilities, and where determined is not practical or feasible. So if you get those businesses that come in that just don't look like they would be beneficial for making this requirement stick, that's a reason to provide that exception. So those are in here to work with and allow those exceptions to be made.
Thank you, Scott.
How many, how many parking place, bicycle slots do we have, let's say, for the rec center? Is that, do they have them there?
I'll let.
This gentleman here.
I was just out of curiosity.
Let Hezekiah answer that.
Your name, sir?
Hi, Chairman, Commissioners, Hezekiah Allen with the Cottonwood Parks Recreation Department. To answer your question, and I, I hope I don't butcher this, Commissioner Narwood?
Yes.
Okay. We have a bike rack, and I think it'll fix 20 bikes?
Twenty.
At this point? Thank you for your time today, and more importantly, thank you for your service. This is a commitment, and I appreciate it. When we think, and when we put this in context, I commend you, because you make decisions today that affect tomorrow. A lot of times, we'll make these decisions based on today's data points and what we see around the community. So thinking in the future, let's picture this, that we build this great network of bicycle connectivity where we have trails, and we have bicycle routes, and we create a community that is, that is active, not only passive, but, but actively moving around this community on bicycles. Also put in the context that the Forest Service is working on 128 miles of trails, just on the West Mingus, the old shooting range that was just closed down. Our roads are not getting any wider, and so that's why communities are going through the, to these complete streets models, because we have to have ways to move people around this community. And I think in context of business, we think that we're putting another piece of legislation on their back. In actuality, what the League of American Bicyclists have seen is that by doing this and creating this network, you actually increase economic activity tenfold. I challenge anybody to name the businesses from Walgreens all the way down to Old Town, because you're cruising on a car at a certain speed limit, it's hard to see, it's hard to see each business, but on a bicycle, it's very easy to see that. And so I think that the 10 percent ratio, a lot of communities do that, for example, New York, City Council also passed a bill mandating the commercial parking garage spaces for bicycle. One bicycle for every 10 cars, up to 200 cars. That's in New York, where they have a real hard time finding space. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but parking for a business is based on square footage, and that's a ratio. So this business can see this many people, they need to provide this many parking spaces, and so this bicycle ordinance would work off that ratio. I think the 10 percent, I think that little caveat, providing the commission an opportunity to make fine adjustments as they see fit, gives you flexibility. I think we don't want to confuse flexibility with, with too much flexibility, you know what I mean?
Exceptions.
Exceptions.
Any questions? Any questions? No, thank you. Okay, my, my comments, we definitely need something like this, this is a start. I also agree with Commissioner Dell. I can, I can see a number of potential exceptions. I would like to see the Bicycle Committee and the city staff continue to work on this and refine this, maybe pinpoint some areas where we can, we don't have to make it exceptions all the time, that we could add to this, and there's, you got some good general clauses, I think, which are good, but maybe we can, for some of these businesses and so forth, give some more thought to specific areas, just make sure we're covered, okay? So that we're not up here having to make judgment calls of five or six, seven people, strictly left to our judgment, and, you know, that's one of the reasons we're here, that's one of our jobs, I agree, and we will have that, no matter what, if that happens to any of our ordinances. But I, I would like to firstly see this go forward to the city council, and, and then we continue to work on this, you know, and refine this, and possibly expand it, see what the possibilities are in the future. Yes, sir.
So I, I guess I'm wondering, are you saying you want to send this back, or where do we all stand on this right now?
All right, Commissioner Hart, as far as recommendation for approval to the city council, consideration amendment towards zoning ordinance?
I'd recommend it.
Recommend it, Mr. Dell?
I would recommend it.
Mr. Hart?
I would.
I would, too. All right, yes, sir, I'll entertain a motion, sir.
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
One quick comment, after you said that number seven in exceptions, you were saying maybe the staff and Bicycle Advisory Committee can work together in some of those. So this is just a suggestion, quick, right now, we talked about, instead of having that Planning and Zoning Commission may allow exceptions, do you want to change that to, to the departments, so we can work on that?
No, I know, I'm talking about for, further amendments to this ordinance and expanding and growing this particular ordinance.
Okay, my, my suggestion still, would you like to change that?
No.
The staff would work with BAC as with the project?
Well, I, I think that's just a comment on my part, a suggestion going forward. As far as this ordinance goes, I, I think it, I like it the way it's written. I want them to come back to us, when you, if we, after studying it going forward, maybe a year from now, we say, okay, we've, we've highlighted some areas, and maybe we need to put in the ordinance so we don't have to have so many considerations for exceptions for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Maybe we don't, maybe we just leave it the way it is, but that's more of a study situation, that's not a, that's not a requirement of this. I still think the Planning and Zoning Commission should be the per, the body to do the exceptions, yes.
Right, I, I agree, and staff makes recommendations now on things, and I think we should continue with bicycles, I don't think that should be handled any, any differently.
No.
So if you make, you make a study on bicycles, and you make a recommendation, we take that under consideration like we do anything else.
Yeah, we, we, you know, down the road, there may not be any changes, but just to, to just further look into this, is what we're asking, but that's not part of, that's just my comments.
Okay.
Okay? We don't want to give Scott any more power.
No, no.
No power, no.
Not too much, yes, sir.
But, Scott, just quickly, but I, also, I would like to say that, you know, we would like to have a little bit more staff-level approval in certain projects, which we will bring it to you later on. We don't want to bring every single changes or approval to the P N, P N Z Commission, so that takes time from the applicant's point of view. Not for this one, maybe, maybe we'll change that in the future to make it faster, make the decisions.
Yeah, well, no, I don't have a problem with that, no, we could do that, that's one of the things could be studied as well.
Staff-level approvals are also important.
Yeah, I mean, that could, that could be part of the study, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd just like to throw out there, you know, as, as Nancy mentioned earlier, staff in the Bike Committee has been working on some sort of ordinance for a while now. I know we'd like to get everything perfect, one go around, we don't have to come back, we don't have issues, but worst-case scenario, if this ordinance goes through, gets approved, and we find that there's issues later, we can always make an amendment.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, and, and just start process going forward.
So hopefully, it wor, you know, it, it should work the way it's written, but if it just comes to be too burdensome that we can't get everything the way it should be, or what the intent of the ordinance was, we can always look at making those amendments as well.
Because one of the things we are, we pride ourselves as well, and, and I think we need to do this, is we need to continue to be business-friendly community, and, you know, we don't want to put too much burden, you know, on our businesses coming into town and so forth either, undue burden. We do want quality development, and, but I just, and I see this as a good first step going forward, and, and let's, let's go with it and see where it goes. Yes, sir, I'll entertain a motion, sir.
I recommend for approval to City Council, Z O dash 18 dash 002, amendments to Section 406 Parking and Loading Requirements, consideration of zoning ordinance, text amendments to Section 406, adding 406 dot H bicycle parking.
Can I have a second to that motion?
I second it.
Mr. Hart, second, Vice Chairman made a motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and as fully approved, thank you, Scott. Item number six, Z 018 003, Amendment to Section 406 Parking and Loading Requirements.
All right, thank you again, Mr. Chairman, Z 18 003, another amendment to Section 406 Parking and Loading Requirements. This is in relation to the parking schedule, the required number of spaces based on the use and the square footage of the use. Also adding some provisions to and allow a reduction of requirements based on certain conditions by the Community Development Director. Adding provision regarding compact spaces, allowing a certain percentage of the required number of spaces to be compact. Also allow the Community Development Director to require additional parking under certain conditions if it's warranted, if it's not addressed in the ordinance. So there's a variety of things we're looking at here. The biggest is to change some of the requirements on the number of required spaces. Staff has done research, looking at how we compare to most of the other cities and towns around here, including places like Sedona and Flagstaff, that we all have parking issues, especially in their downtown sections. So we've looked through it, looked at theirs, looked at ours, see how we compare. Most of it, it looks like we require more parking in the other places, so we'd like to come in more in line with what they do. One of the biggest things that we noticed is, we base ours on the usable floor area of the building, whereas everybody else uses the gross square footage. So that's a significant difference on the number of parking that we require versus other places. This is just a little screenshot of what we found in Flagstaff and Sedona compared to what we were looking at. Everything that's highlighted is what we're looking at changing to more meet what they have. First one, for example, is guest spaces for multifamily. We have a certain number of spaces that are required for multifamily units, but no provision to require guest spaces. We've seen that that's been a problem in some developments, that you just have residential parking, and now overflow parking goes into the street and other places, because there's no guest parking. Bars, cocktail lounges, restaurants, again, we used to have, ours is one per 35 square feet of usable floor area, whereas Flagstaff, Sedona are one per 50 and 100 square feet of gross floor area. So we'd like to make those changes on those, to do one per 100 square feet. Drive-in food facilities are a little different, they have theirs based on a drive-through, stacking spaces, we'd like to add stacking spaces, distance, a minimum of four vehicles from the ordering window, or the service window, changing used car lots, some convenience stores. We don't have one for convenience stores, we have it, it falls under retail, we'd like to add convenience stores as part of that as well. Retail stores, we're pretty close on, but again, the biggest difference is usable floor area versus gross square footage, so we'd like to change that wording to be more in line with what everybody else is doing. Again, shopping centers, offices, banks, medical, dental clinics, auditoriums, churches, wholesaling, warehousing, manufacturing, industrial. So looking at a variety of all these uses, and what they require versus what we require, we adjusted those numbers to be better in line, and to help numerous potential developments and previous developments that just, for example, one of the projects presented to you earlier, that shopping center, would now fall under the required number of spaces with some of these changes that could be approved based on certain factors. Any questions you may have?
Mr. Hart?
What is, what is the working definition that you're using for usable floor space?
We have that as...
Is that between the walls?
No. Usable floor space in our, usable floor area shall mean area capable of devote, being devoted to the specified use, it does not include kitchens, restrooms, hallways, et cetera. It's very vague, so we interpret it as basically where the public can be. Counters, ordering counters, things like that.
Isles.
Right. But hallways don't count, restrooms don't count, the kitchen area doesn't count, storage areas don't count.
Okay. Mr. Dell?
I guess my, like, comment to this is, I like to break down comparative to, I mean, we're not putting the blanket thing like the last ordinance, so, I mean, I think this could apply to the other one. Not, is extreme, of course, but you could do something like this with the other one, with a little tweak to it, so that's why I would comment.
Commissioner Narwood?
Yeah, I have a, I have a question, this relates to compact car stalls.
I agree.
I see no reason why we should have parking for compact cars. I absolutely see no reason for it. If you're trying to reduce, or the goal is to maybe reduce or relax the number of parking spaces, that's fine. I would take that space, and I would never have a compact car space, because if you only have one space left, or two space lefts in the parking lot, and the only guy, the last guy who comes in has a double-wide pickup truck, where do you think he's gonna park? He's gonna park Bigfoot in that little parking space, and I see that over and over again with smaller parking spaces. I would just allocate the space to, the extra space to the, the number of spaces you'd like to have, and make them all bigger, and not make spaces smaller. I don't see any reason to have a, a smaller parking place for a compact car. Cars are actually tending toward bigger, not smaller nowadays, if you, if you watch the financial news, so I don't see, I don't see the benefit to anybody having a small parking place. In fact, I see it's, it's a detriment. It's just an opinion, but think about that. Up to 10 percent, doesn't make sense.
I didn't know.
That's all I have to say.
I didn't know if the, the, the idea of the compact car space was to, to put more in there, but I, I agree, I, with Commissioner Narwood, I, I think the compact car, the, you know, Ford just announced they're not making the Fiesta their smallest car, that everybody's moving towards, right now, the trend, and that can change, but my experience is, compact car spaces are not for compact cars, it's an open space, and bigger cars are in there, and people are squeezing out, cars are getting dinged up, I just, I, I don't think it's a good idea personally, but I do like this idea. Parking has been one of those issues for years now that we've had to deal with, we... We finally made exceptions to Old Town to unburden the merchants from having these requirements, and so I think this is a step in the right direction to clarify it across the board and make it easier for businesses to understand coming in, and for you guys as well, makes a lot of sense. So outside of the compact car thing, yeah.
Scott, I would agree with that, those two comments. I really think this is really good, what we're doing, and getting in line, and getting a better definition of, you know, gross square footage, it's a lot easier to calculate. And I would agree with the compact car situation. A few places I've been where there's compact car, guys pull in there, you know, it-
Yeah, and they pull into the big boy spaces too, right?
Oh, yeah, 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 I guess I don't really, what's the, what's the real need for that? Baron, you have a comment?
Mr. Chairman, we should give, I think we should give that option to people, they would like to use that, but, and also that, it is up to the developer of that parcel. If they think that they don't need it, or they prefer to give regular parking lots, let them do it.
Yeah.
But certain areas, especially infill properties, they might choose that option.
Yeah.
So it is, it is not like, you know, what is the trend going, it is like, people should have that option, we have that. It might be that they don't use that ten percent of compact cars, if they have the space.
My problem is we're requiring up to ten percent.
Right.
See, I don't think that should be, if they want to do compact car parking, fine, that's up to them, that's-
Yeah, no, it's not a requirement, it's an option.
It says may.
Just may, okay.
It says may.
Well, it does give the applicant, though, an opportunity to squeeze in another parking place, right?
Yeah.
If he makes them all compact, right?
But remember, we do have a lot of infill properties that they don't have the luxury of providing bigger spaces.
Okay.
Not just, yeah, but it should be an option, may.
I don't think it should be in the ordinance, that it should be. I don't think it should be in the ordinance that they have to have ten percent of compact.
Not they don't have, they don't have to have-
They don't have to, they can have up to ten percent if they choose.
May, they may.
If they choose to have compact parking, then they can go up to ten percent of what they're requiring.
Okay, I guess I misunderstood then, so you're saying it's their option? We're not ordinating that they have to have ten percent.
We're not requiring it, but if they do choose to do it, they can only do ten percent of their parking.
Up to ten, yeah, so it's not all compact cars.
Got it.
All right, that's fine, I don't have a problem with that. Any other comments, gentlemen?
I, yes. If the developer chooses to use this option, is there any requirement for him justifying his belief? I mean, I've actually seen, I actually remember parking lots full of compact cars, where there were compact car spaces, and they were full. I also remember the arguments of people pulling in with cars and saying, well, that's a compact, you know, and it's, you know, it's a Ford Fairlane or something, oh, that's a compact car. And so I'd like, if, if, if the developer wants to use the option, I think he needs some kind of a justification. Now, if he's got a lot, if it's like a development for a lot of elderly people, and there are a lot of the people around here who are using those half-site cars, or hardly cars, but I think there needs to be some kind of a justification on the part of the developer, if he wants to use that option.
Commissioner Hart, I think that's where the staff comes in, when we are working with the applicant, so, and by the time the project comes to you, we had several meetings with the applicant, so I think that judgment will happen way before that. It doesn't have to be formal justification, but I'm sure there will be some need for that, so we'll, if you leave it up to the staff-
Okay, so there will be a process, okay.
Sure.
Sure, that's good. Okay. Redmond?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Norwood, you recommend?
I have, I'm sorry.
Recommend approval?
Oh, yeah, no, no problem.
I'm for that. Vice chairman, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval to City Council of Z O dash eighteen dash zero zero three amendments to section four oh six parking and loading requirements, consideration of zoning ordinance, text amendments to section four oh six dot D and section four oh six dot D dot six.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second motion.
Okay, vice chairman has made the motion, Commissioner Norwood has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimously approved, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, ladies and gentlemen, discussion items.
Eighty-nine and Vine, what's going on? I saw it in the newspaper, but I haven't heard anything.
Yeah, look at-
Mrs. Marshall, do you want me to say something?
Hope we can make this fairly quick, my operating knee is operating it on me, so if we can, I think we can postpone this until the seventh.
I'll do.
These next two items are pretty quick, in turn, we want to get some feedback from you on-
Okay, exactly, as Jim said, we are, we need your input on this, we will bring these things as an ordinance to you later on. These are just introducing the ideas and letting you know that we are working on these, and we would like to get your directions if you have, and just quickly, we'll show you what we have already in hand. Some of them already problem for the city, we have a lot of complaints or issues, therefore we are bringing these things, and so with your direction, if you have anything additional tonight, we will bring it to you soon, the ordinance format of these topics. And Jim will go through some slides.
The first one is on wayfinding signs, that's what we call them, sort of directional, that may technically be an off-site sign, so you've got a business that's a block off the main highway. There would be some provision that there'd be some, whether it be attached to a light post, its own kiosk, some format, to try to get people off the main road to go visit the adjacent businesses. Some of these are just different ideas, this is actually in Jerome, where they have a kiosk style. And then this one would be something where, you know, the individual properties, individual businesses could rent a space on it, and then there's different designs and styles of how you could accomplish that. ADOT has some up on the highway that are not the most visually appealing.
Yes.
And over time, some of them have deteriorated and even been removed. One of the areas we're specifically looking at is the Old Town area, and getting some of the people off, just driving down Main Street, only walking down Main Street, and to know what's adjacent to it.
Other parts of the town also.
Yeah, and other parts of town also, some of our initial, what started this was some Old Town issues, but along the highway, eighty-nine A Main Street, there would be provisions for an off-site sign allowance for the businesses.
Okay, it's getting uncomfortable. Anything else? Do you have the microphone on?
Yeah.
There's a handout here that the Parks and Rights Commission has come up with a design, and so we thought like in order wayfinding signs, they could have something. In terms of-
I'll just chime in real quick, you know, we did this a couple year, two or three years ago with, on Main Street pointing down to some of the businesses, Cork and Catch is one, and, you know, we talked about this, and what got put up there, and quite honestly, it felt like the city, and no offense to anybody, was look, kind of just shoved that through because some businesses said, hey, we, we need this, and we looked at this, and then it went away, and we got some really ugly signs up there, and it almost sounded like the city was saying, well, we're going to charge you for this, to put your name up here, and it just kind of went away, and we got what's over there, they're just blue, you can't even read them, it's, so I'd like to see something like this, that was actually we had follow-up and input on, and something that's nice, I don't know that it's really appropriate, on some of those busy streets where you're buzzing by, speed limit says forty-five, people are going fifty-five really, and you've got, you know, a three-inch sign that says restaurant down this way with six other things layered on top of it, it just seemed like it was not-
Staff's goal was something like this, to have in the, our rules and ordinance, that will be master sign plan. As you see, there are different styles, whatever is applicable to that site, we would pull from that master sign plan and build that one, or whoever is going to do it. So unfortunately, we don't have it on the slide, sorry, but you have it in your, on your desk now, the copies of the master trails plan.
I suggest we take this home with us.
Yes, please.
May seventh, gives time to digest this maybe a little bit, for me personally, to like comment in-
Actually, this is already an approved, what do you call, file, it is already approved, so we have it ready.
Right.
So when Steph was working on these kind of master sign plan, somebody showed me that Trails master plan was approved, and the signs are already in there.
Yeah.
So, sorry again, we don't have it up there, but it is pretty much following with the River Rock theme, and several options, pole sign, monument sign, whatever is applicable again to that request, they would pull from this and then build it, so we are going to create an ordinance for wayfinding, and this will be designed for that.
All right.
Can we ask questions now, or?
Yes.
Yeah, just, I can see one thing where the town is developing a property, or the county is developing a property, and having way signs because it's public use, right? And you can argue for businesses, but who would, who would pay for the signs, let's say, that are in the bottom right-hand corner, or up here, if they're designating businesses, and somebody mentioned businesses shouldn't pay, or they should pay, what's the feeling on that? Because there's going to be changeover of businesses, and when you have a changeover, the new business is going to want, why am I not up there, right?
Businesses pay for their slots, yeah.
They will pay for their slot, so there'll be a number of allocated slots per number of businesses on that side street?
Correct.
And when they get filled, they get filled?
Yes.
Top to bottom, is that the way it's going to work?
That's how it is, practice and everywhere else.
So they will pay, the town's not going to pay for the sign?
No, not that part.
Got it, good.
Anything else on this, we may, it's a good start, yeah.
Exactly, we'll bring something more to you.
All right, good, yeah. And feather and flag banners, real quick?
Again, this, this has become problem recent months, that it is going everywhere, it's coming up, popping up everywhere, and our practice for years through the zoning ordinance was, flag banners were not allowed. And so just recently, the language of the ordinance was challenged a little bit, is it really not allowed, or it can be this way or that way? So we will be bringing this to you, that it clearly states that they are not allowed, that's the direction city would like to go. Like I said, it's becoming problem with the code enforcement police department, so we need clarification. So we have several examples to show you from the city, throughout the city.
Good.
That sounds good, yeah, I don't think we need to get into this.
Throw in that inflatable sticky man thing. Oh, Mr. Blue?
Yeah, Mr. Blue, no, I think we all agree, this, yeah, this has gone crazy, and we need to define this.
Well, this doesn't include, this doesn't have any message in it, so that's another thing we need to clarify, these, are these decorations for the businesses, or are they, or are you showing the, so this is not allowed, because there is a message, that's still advertising, that's a sign, but the plain ones are just, we have been treating as a decoration, the other one, like this one.
What about tent signs? What's the, I forget the policy on tent signs.
Tent, A-frame?
Well, okay, A-frame signs.
What about it?
What's our policy on those?
They cannot, go ahead.
Every business is allowed one A-frame sign that they can put out adjacent to the highway. There's an annual fee, they pay twenty-five dollars a year for that. Old Town has their own set of standards.
Have to be removed at the end of the day?
Yes, they're supposed to be only during business hours.
Not in right of way either.
And, right.
Kind of forget.
And a certain distance away from, from the drive aisle.
Sounds good. I, I think we're pretty much in agreement, proceed, and look forward to getting an ordinance recommendation before us.
So is there a lot on the May seventh meeting? You mentioned there's a lot coming up.
Yes, what's on May seventh?
We have some text amendments to bring, and whatever is left over from these meetings too.
It used to be more disclosing of what was going on, now the TV cameras make gunshots.
A little bit more.
Yeah. I saw something in the newspaper about eighty-nine and Vine, but we haven't been alerted of anything.
Yeah, well, this is not on the agenda, so we shouldn't be talking about it.
No, we shouldn't be talking about it.
How does the newspaper get that information? I mean, if we don't have it, how come they have it? I'm just wondering.
It went to City Council.
It was a presentation to City Council.
And by the way, tomorrow night, the same project is coming on, City Council, you can watch that.
Very good. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Yeah, we, I make a motion, we adjourn.
Return, second.
Second.
Aye.
Congratulations. Survived the first one.